Good evening, I'd like to call the order. This business meeting for the Tacoma School District Board of Directors. Today is Thursday, January 19th, 2019.
10th.
January 10th, I've lost a day. Alright, we're gonna have to start over. Thursday, January 10th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Hines.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
And is President Viall excused?
She is.
Thank you.
Item number four, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move adoption.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Agenda item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. 5.1, observance of January 2019 as school board recognition month.
Good evening, Vice President Hines and members of the board. All of us here in the audience and watching on either television or our Facebook livestream get to turn the tables on you tonight, but in a good way. And it's my pleasure to kick off our recognition of all of you and what you have contributed to the success of our students. Governor Inslee has proclaimed January as school board recognition month, and I would like to read his proclamation and then turn it over to Superintendent Santorno. Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens of a democratic society who enjoy productive and satisfying lives, and whereas Washington's 295 locally-elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state, and whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $15 billion, and employ approximately 120,000 people, and whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved, and whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools, and whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as school board recognition month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Thank you, school board members.
It would be impossible to stand and talk about all the things that our Board of Directors have done that have served students. Certainly, this morning's celebration of our 89.3 graduation rate is a great recognition of the work that you've done, and we so appreciate it. Just generally, I wanted to go and make sure the public remembers the awards. These are national awards and state awards. 2016, one of the ones I'm most proud of is that the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors received the Council of Urban Boards of Education, the CUBE Award for Urban School Board Excellence in 2016. And that includes boards from Los Angeles, Dallas, Texas, New York City. And so to win that was an incredible honor. 2016, the Washington Board of Distinction, and that's when they only had a few people that received that award. They've broadened it since then, but in 2016, this board won that Board of Distinction. And then this year, again, 2018, the Washington Board of Distinction. So those take innovative, out-of-the-box thinking, and the application is pretty dense to talk about what the board has done. So it's really an achievement that this board has accomplished that. I can't say enough about each one of you, but I just really wanted to make sure that I let you know. Director Hines, I so much appreciate your commitment to authentic parent engagement. You're always the one who's talking about what have we done to go out to make sure that we've connected with parents. And thank goodness, you're always busy, and you're out there at the soccer field, at the baseball field, and all the different events, because at those events, you seem to make sure that you listen to the questions from parents and get their agenda and answer and come back. So that really makes us better and helps us understand those things that we have to commit to. Director Cobb, thank you for your social justice lens. You're always looking at the perspectives of all of our students and listening with a good ear for what's that next thing that we've missed. And you're so committed to representing all of our parents in the district, and your voice in that comes out all the time, and I wanted to make sure that you knew that we appreciate it. And also, you know, your role in OSBI, I think, informs us and makes sure that it keeps us on track. Director Enrique, you're new to the Tacoma Public School Board, but let me tell you, there's nothing better than having fresh eyes coming on and looking at what we do and what it looks like and asking really good questions. And you've done that for us, we appreciate that. And then also, your lens from the health community as a practicing doctor has really helped us. It makes me feel so much more comfortable about the things we're doing to ensure the medical health of our students. So thank you so much for jumping in, getting involved, and really being an active part of our board. Director Winskill, they say that tenure is the thing that gives us a real look at our history and keeps us from repeating the same mistakes we've made in the past. And so I so appreciate the expertise that you bring to this board and that you know what we've been involved in before and what we've done. I also appreciate you have a broad base out there, you connect with our parents and our teachers and give us sometimes perspectives that we don't get, and I really, really appreciate that. Director Viall is not here tonight, but we also know that she has a variety of experiences, classroom, city, state, and so she brings those perspectives to our board and helps us with, along with all of you, with the policies and practices, and also the politics, and provides us guidance from that lens. So I appreciate that you all work together, that you get good things done, that you're taking the good things that are going on Tacoma that led to 89% graduation rate, and that you're putting it in policy so that, you know, if we all got hit by a truck, sorry, I know that won't happen, but that what we've done will be in policy and direct other boards. So thank you very much. This audience and our public has no idea the amount of time that you put in and the hearings and the reading and the closed sessions and the executive sessions and the board meetings and all the work that you put toward this endeavor. It is definitely the Lord's work, and I want you to know how much we appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Would any of you like to comment on your service as a board member? Any reflections or things to share? Director Cobb?
I'll just say that I just appreciate working with each of you. I think it was nice to hear Superintendent Santorno's reflections on each of us, but I, in thinking about our board, have thought a lot about the various strengths that each of us bring and how different each of our experiences are from one to the other, but how we kind of work to fill in each other's gaps. And I appreciate that we do work together and that even when we disagree about things, that we find a way forward. So I just, again, appreciate the opportunity to work with you all and the conversations and just your individual commitment to the students in our district. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Director Leon?
Sure, yeah. I appreciate a lot of learning that I've had to do since I've joined, so it's been great having leadership from you, board members, and of course, the administration. And I really appreciate the teachers and all the staff that have helped me learn too, because I've been out in some schools, learning a lot about how this wonderful school system is working and always striving to get better. So, thank you.
Director Winskill?
So the only thing I would say is that we all want the same thing, but we all approach it differently, and we all look at different ways to get there. So I just think that our whole board really wants what's best for Tacoma and I think operates on those principles. I hope we do, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective, and I think for the first time that anybody could recall, all five sitting board members have either children or grandchildren in Tacoma Public Schools. So as we sit up here making the tough decision, and I tell people, this is my other full-time job, it has impacts directly on us and our family and our neighborhood, and so I think that that perspective helps us to really vet and think through the decisions that we make, and some of them are easier than others. Well, thank you for the recognition, we appreciate that.
We'll move on to item number six, the superintendent's report. I believe we have, before we get into budget, which is one of those tough decisions that we have to grapple with, I think we have something to lighten all of our day today?
Absolutely. It's so nice when we are able to have young people in our auditorium, it reminds us of why we do the work we do. I'd like to ask Janet Stewart to come forward, and she has, she's from the Denver Council PTA. God, how did I say that?
That's been a long time.
Go Broncos.
It's okay, Kevin will dub in, Tacoma.
Yeah, dub that in. Tacoma Council PTA, thank you so much for coming.
Congratulations to the school board for your special month. Thank you for all you do. We're with the Tacoma Council of PTA. I'm Janet Stewart, this is Tekeemah Jones, and we have Michael McSweeney back in the, he's rounding up the kids. We are the board members for the council. And we have a special art program called Reflections, it's run by a national PTA, and seven different PTAs competed in Tacoma, and we have the top 25 students here to recognize them. They can, this really, this program is for everybody, because there's several different categories you can enter in. There's a visual arts, photography, musical composition, literature, film video-making, or choreography and dance. So really, you can just do anything. And the theme this year is Heroes Around Me. I handed you guys a program that has all the photos of the artwork and some little snapshots of the films that they did and the literature, so at your leisure, you can look at that. So with that said, I would like to announce our students. I know that parents, a lot of them want to get pictures, it's kind of hard with everything in motion, so we're gonna do a group photo at the very end, just in case you don't capture what you want. And I'm gonna ask the students to just come up the ramp and shake hands with the dignitaries, and then line up against the wall, and then we'll bring you back, line up against that wall and bring you back for a group photo. Okay, first up is our middle school visual arts, Charlotte Southworth from Truman. Mariel Mendoza from Meeker Middle School. John Paul Lund from Truman Middle School. Visual arts intermediate, Rachel Sim, Browns Point. Isabella Yee, Browns Point. Visual arts primary, Mason Kent from Geiger. Katherine Stegman from Point Defiance. Next category is photography, middle school slash high school. This is Rachel Nguyen from Soda, she entered through Truman Middle School. Photography intermediate, Tanner Austin from Point Defiance. Lila Kilannik from Jefferson. Photography primary, Ava Herbertson. Literature middle school, Jillian Schmidt from Meeker. Julia Crossen from Meeker.
Can I just interrupt real quick? So I'm a little sick today, so I can't shake anyone's hand, I don't want to pass it on, so just pass on that, so I'm not shaking anybody's hand.
Literature intermediate, Santiago Buffo from Point Defiance. Chelsea Tibalt from Browns Point. And John Keos from Crescent Heights. Literature primary, Hazel Green from Jefferson. Film intermediate, Alana Von Nagel from Point Defiance. Bella Wenzel from Point Defiance. Film primary, Mina Smith. And music intermediate, Nathaniel Nguyen from Point Defiance. Did I leave anybody out? If so, come on up. Thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
Want to do a picture?
Yes, please. Yes, please. Okay.
Hey guys, you are primary students, that means kindergarten, third grade, you come here right now. Okay. There's a math theory line drawn on the carpet, right there, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Alright, if you were in fourth or fifth grade, come on over, you're gonna stand in between these shorties, okay? So you're gonna be in the window. Alright, you. Right there, you. Hold on, let's see how the balance is. Okay. Guess what? You're going to swap spots. Okay, middle schoolers? Window yourselves. Okay? Alright, come forward. Alright, yep. Okay, were there any high schoolers today? Okay, alright. Okay, so, everybody is going to smile.
Oh, we need the school board in there.
Oh, sorry, sorry. School board members, I thought you could take your own direction. Please, please, window behind those middle schoolers, and some of you may have to step on your tiptoes. Okay, so I am the bossiest person in the room, well, maybe not, there are some of you that might be bossier. Alright, um, young lady who is wearing a cool green and black shirt, would you please swap places with the young lady that's wearing the cream-colored sweater behind you? You two girls, treat. Yep. Come on up, Rachel, come on up. Okay, alright, Rachel, will you do this? Awesome. Okay, everybody looking right here at Ms. Christina. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. Okay, silly picture, ready? One, two, three. Awesome. I'll send these to you, and then you'll have the copies.
Reflections families, you can head out to the boardroom unless you, across down the hall unless you want to stay for the board meeting. They're talking budget.
Cookies in the boardroom.
Do you guys want to go?
Sure.
I don't know who. I don't know who would want to miss it.
Smart.
I think I took more than a few inserts.
She called, it's the season.
Alright, is our chief financial officer ready?
I don't know, I'm gonna go have some cookies.
I think they may have needed a better hiding spot, I think Dr. Garcia may have located those earlier, but that remains to be seen. We'll move on to the second item under the superintendent's report, the budget impact update.
Despite the excitement that you've all expressed about the budget report, I am actually happy to be here tonight to give you a brief update on where we are at financially. I would like to just quickly point out that we have an approach that we have been taking, this is our process. We have talked about it in a number of board meetings in the past, and so I don't plan on spending an incredible amount of time on it, but essentially, we have focused our efforts on phases one and two, which have included central administrative exempt and vacancy positions, as well as other central administration positions, as part of what we are going to be looking at in order to address our budget deficit. So this tonight is our final installment for the 1819 budget deficit elimination. We had identified back at the beginning of the year that we had a budget deficit for the 1819 year of $23.4 million, and as of today, with a series of installments that we have expressed over past board meetings, as well as some new information this evening, we have identified $23.9 million of reductions or other funding that will be used to offset our budget deficit for this year. That represents almost 35 full-time equivalent positions, as well as $4 million of one-time funding. That one-time funding comes out of our fund balance, it would be out of our savings account, and even using that $4 million, if it comes to that, would still put us in a position where we have been able to meet our debt and fiscal requirement of 5%, so we would still have an ample amount of savings available to offset future needs and/or any kind of emergency that might arise. What has changed since the last time we brought you an update back in December is an additional position elimination of five FTEs. Those positions there are listed as the Director of Integrated Systems Management, the Director of Early Learning, an Assistant Principal at Elementary, Maintenance and Operations Specialist, and a Library Program Support Representative. That last position is a vacancy, the other four positions have been filled, and I would also like to add that the Administrative Principal at Elementary position is based on a program change that is not necessarily related to budget reductions, it's part of the work that we're doing naturally through the process of staffing, but we have identified it here as part of our budget savings process moving forward for this year. Those five identified positions represent three exempt, one professional/technical, and one office-professional position, and as I said before, one was a vacancy and four are eliminations of individuals. When we're looking at our progress monitoring, we have brought this chart or a similar chart to you over the past few months, we wanted to be able to express and visually represent the reductions that we have made. Back in September, we started with 232 roughly FTEs in the Central Administration Group, and as of right now, we're down to 213.7, with the expectation, because we haven't let everyone go as of a certain date, we plan to carry a number of these individuals on through June, and so what we're anticipating is by the end of this fiscal year, we will have a reduction from 231 down to 197 FTEs. From next steps perspective, communication with the administration staff, we're going to have group meetings here at the central office building so that we can talk through the Central Administration Group impacts more precisely with the individuals that have been more greatly impacted. Those meetings are set up for next week, or the following week, excuse me. We'll continue to address downstream impacts that occur through the natural reduction of staff requires us to rework the way we provide services in certain circumstances, or the, you know, who reports to whom. And then we will continue our analysis of other spending reductions, so we'll continue being lean and trying to find efficiencies through the system that will continue to benefit us through the rest of this year. And finally, on January 17th, we'll have a board study session where we intend to outline the 1920 process. I do want to say that this work has been very swift, in two and a half months, we've managed to identify 23 and almost $24 million worth of funding, but it has been devastating and hard. So just, you know, recognize that we all take this, we're very proud of the work that we've done, but at the same time, it's been really hard. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I want to emphasize that last point, that I don't want people to confuse swiftness with ease, that you and the team have in short order put these cuts together, but very challenging, and the results, the impact is yet to be seen. Questions or comments on the presentation? I have a question on slide three, when we talk about non-personnel costs, what are we, what does that entail?
Right, so you'll see on the FTE versus the savings realized, the savings realized represents the salary and benefits of the impacted individuals based on when they're leaving the system. So if somebody left the system in October, then we've incorporated nine or 10 months of their salary, depending on when they left. If they're leaving in June, then only two months of their salary is included, but it does include the salary and benefits associated with the time that they will no longer be employed with us.
And the note, this is...
Did that answer your question? So sorry.
The non-personnel costs?
Oh, the non-personnel costs. Oh, I'm so sorry. So the non-personnel costs represent, we've made some reductions in curriculum and instruction, we had some contingencies set aside just in the budget that we knew we would have some, that we worked on as part of the bargaining agreement. We've reduced some professional development opportunities, we have $4 million of fund balance set aside, we've done some lean operation activities, so we're cleaning up our processes and trying to become more efficient. Those are some of the highlights that come to mind, but I can be more specific if that's something that you're interested in, in a report to the board.
I'm just trying to differentiate for the public, what the personnel is salary and benefits, and then the non-personnel, what that entails. So I would say if there's a way, as we're putting this out to the community to make certain network, clarifying what constitutes personnel costs and what's included in the non-personnel costs?
Thank you, I will work with Mr. Vopel to make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you. Director Cobb?
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Within those non-personnel costs, are any of them non-capital, like facilities maintenance things that are like reduction in the level of service or some deferred maintenance stuff? And in particular, is any of it stuff that the public will see? Because we get comments and questions sometimes about field maintenance or other things that the public just rarely sees, so I'm curious about those pieces that trigger questions down the road.
Well, I think that there's probably multiple answers to that question. The thing that comes to mind, we did have, we had planned to be able to invest an additional half million dollars towards preventative maintenance, and if we didn't invest that, we would have to defer additional maintenance costs. And so we weren't able to provide those services, and so now those things will continue to defer, and they're likely things that have been deferring for a while, because, and I've actually had the conversation with Mr. Williams today, everything that we do as far as maintenance and preventative maintenance is a prioritization on itself. We're fixing the things that are broken or immediate or safety issues, and then there are a number of things that will end up having to be deferred. We won't be able to do some things, I can't tell you exactly what those things might be specifically, because we didn't identify...
right now, regardless of any reductions.
Thank you.
And so this budget is, of the 1819 and the 1920, is the less challenging because the 1920 will include the full impacts of the levy, is that true?
Correct, correct, and, I mean, I don't want to go too far into what we're going to discuss next week, but next week I will bring to you what the 1920 deficit looks like, and then what from the 1819 reductions will pass on to the 1920, so that there will be a clear understanding of what our new starting point is.
And this is not directly related to your briefing, but I think the most appropriate place on the agenda to discuss the impact of the federal government shutdown?
It's relatively minimal, as long as it doesn't drag on too long. We do have some grants that are federally funded, but they're funded right now, and most of those grants are based on reimbursement anyway. The bigger impact would be towards our families, if social security isn't being paid, or if food stamps aren't being provided, then our families may have more significant impacts. From a district-level perspective, I don't see anything on the immediate horizon that's going to cause us significant concern.
Meal programs, school lunch?
So, school lunch is funded as of right now.
Is there a near-term date where we would have issues?
Not that I'm aware of. What I would say too is, you know, in the situation where we were no longer to be reimbursed by the federal government, we would have to evaluate if we would be able to use reserves to help offset, and then once the federal funding kicked back in, if we, you know, that might be an option.
Okay, I raise it, because as we're talking about spend down of reserves and just making certain we're taking those things into consideration, because I don't frankly see an end to the government shutdown anytime soon, and how do we mitigate those direct impacts to our kids and families, so that we're, that we are thinking about the potential impact, and we've got some dates and timelines and contingency plans? And my expectation is not that you have that all right in front of you today, but that we are thinking through that, and that if we need to be engaging with the congressional delegation and others to express what the real-world impacts are of the shutdown, particularly as we're trying to close the 1819 budget and get ready to start the 1920 budget. Thank you. Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Yes.
We'll move on to item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are large numbers of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Do you have speakers this evening?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Terilyn Lawrence. She is from Wainwright. Please help me if I pronounce your name incorrectly, if you pronounce it at the podium, I appreciate it. She's to be followed by Amanda Zylstra.
Hi, my name's Terilyn Lawrence, I'm a PE teacher over at Wainwright Intermediate. I'm here to express my gratitude as we go through the adoption process of a new curriculum called Focus Fitness. I would like to express, as one of the pilot teachers, and one of the teachers that is going to be leading in training, that we are very happy to be able to have a new program. It's something that we've looked forward to, and we've found something that we believe really aligns with what Tacoma believes in, as well as our initiatives, so we'd just like to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Amanda Zylstra, followed by Angela Vanderlinde.
Good evening, my name's Amanda Zylstra, and I'm also a PE teacher here in the district. I'm at Stewart Middle School, and on behalf of all my fellow PE teachers in Tacoma, I'd like to take a moment and thank you as the board for taking this PE curriculum adoption process into consideration. I've been fortunate enough to work with my colleagues on prioritizing the standards for the Washington State PE and health standards for our district, as well as review the potential curriculums that we could adopt, and I just want to say that I feel very confident that this is a curriculum that will benefit the students of our district. And more importantly, it'll help them to develop their own lifelong fitness, which is something that we all are aiming for, for our community. And I'd also just like to share a few reasons why this curriculum is something that I would highly recommend. The curriculum was developed by PE teachers in Spokane back in 2002, who wanted to teach healthy concepts without compromising activity time, and currently it's being used nationwide in many districts. I have fellow colleagues in other districts who have used it and speak to it. And like I said before, it's closely aligned with the Washington State standards, and since it was developed in Washington. It focuses on addressing the concepts of health and fitness. It isn't a day-by-day teaching guide, so I actually think that's a really wonderful attribute, since all of the PE teachers for the past probably 20 years have been creating their own curriculum as they have gone, and they've done a wonderful job and are working very hard. So this isn't a curriculum that's asking them to just throw everything away that they've been doing, but it will absolutely build on what they have, providing valuable materials that will improve instruction. Everyone in this room knows that data-driven instruction is the key to being a successful teacher, and in this curriculum, it has an online platform that collects not only fitness data, but also formative and summative assessments. Historically, I feel like PE has often struggled to show that it's a valid subject, but this curriculum and the way it's designed provides a way forward for teachers to efficiently keep track of student data and success. It also allows students and parents to access the student information, helping students to take ownership over their own health. And lastly, I just would like to say that I know our district really promotes the whole child, and I think that this is a curriculum that will help PE teachers who address an entirely different side of the children in our district to create a better program for them. I was able to pilot this material this fall, and I found it easy to use, engaging, holding students accountable for their learning, and beneficial to me as a teacher. So I sincerely hope that the board moves forward to adopt this curriculum, and I know in light of budget crisis right now, I know we're asking a lot, but I would really appreciate a move forward on it. Thank you so much.
Angela, and followed by Heather Johnson.
Good evening, I am Angela Vanderlinde, and I am a K-1 elementary school teacher at Lion Elementary, so yes, you saw me a couple of weeks ago. This is my 30th year in Tacoma Public Schools, and it is the only school district that I have ever worked for. So my heart is here, I have been involved in a lot of the literacy programs, so I'm here tonight to ask you that when the pilot for the phonics program that we are piloting right now comes to your table for funding, that you actually look at it. We have been granted by you wonderful literacy frameworks, that I was on part of that team to get through, that we've implemented reading workshop into our classrooms. We have got great libraries that you've purchased for us, great guided reading, but there's a hole, and I've noticed that being as a K-1 teacher, a big hole, and it's in our phonics instruction. Children need a way to access their reading and writing, and there is no only one way for them to access it, and it's to understand the phonics part of reading and writing. And the two programs we are looking at have been vetted through the different sets that the district has for us, and we came down to two that are being piloted. Teachers are piloting both of them, so we're spending four weeks on one and four weeks on another. I've been doing it for a week and have already seen a tremendous amount of growth in my kindergartners. They're wanting to read, they're writing sentences that you could walk into this classroom right now, and you could actually read without having to look at me and say, "I don't know how to read a kindergartner's writing," okay? These programs are Common Core-aligned, they are meant to fit inside a reader's workshop, so it's not changing anything, okay? And there are multiple teachers looking at it across different buildings in the district. Again, as the PE teachers have said, we understand there is a budget crisis, but we have just celebrated our graduation rate, and if we want to continue reaching that, we need to get our children the skills to be able to access everything out there in the world. And the one way to do it that we are missing right now is a phonics program that will be taught across the district. So again, when it's brought to you, please use the hard work of looking at it, and you're more than welcome to come to my classroom over at Mary Lion and see it in action right now if you would like. So thank you.
Heather Johnson?
Heather Johnson, I am equally parts humbled and proud to do the principal at Bryant-Montessori. Long ago, I resigned myself to the fact that I would probably be in school in one form or another for the rest of my life. The truth is that I love school and I love everything about it, and there's too many reasons here for me to tell you all tonight, but one of the big ones that I want to share is that school is magic, and there is pure magic when you walk the halls and watch kids, and the process of learning is magical in so many different ways. And the pure magic for me happens in that learning to read process. Twelve members of my team and I are able to participate in this phonics pilot, we are in the first stage of it, and we're super excited about it. The updated materials that help us to reveal that magic in learning to read. We are starting on the Lucy Culkin side of the house, and so so far, I've been able to encounter a gnome who builds words with students, and his name is Reed, and he gets very upset because people misspell his name all the time, it's R-E-E-D, not R-E-A-D, right? Kids are very excited because they get now to be his consultant, and they're putting blueprints together about how we build words and how we learn words. I have word detectives who are putting their thinking caps on, and they're investigating how digraphs and blends work in words and in books. I have superheroes who walk around with a vowel shield that are hunting down and protecting vowels, and making sure that they're used correctly in their reading and their writing. These pieces are all, again, part of that magic, and so having this updated phonics curriculum, not only the teachers are so excited about it, and just the beauty of opening new materials and having the opportunity to try these things on, but also gives us the tools to reveal the magic in reading. I'm going to leave you with a quote J.K. Rowling wrote, "I don't always believe in the kind of magic that are in my books, but I do believe that something very magical can happen when you read a good book," and that's what the phonics helps us do. So thank you.
That concludes the board comments.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, the consent agenda, and before we take action, I'll let the public know, it may seem that we move rapidly through the consent agenda. These are items that are a part of the normal business of the district, travel, financial documents, hiring, and these are issues that we have all looked at and read through and asked questions prior to us taking action on any of the items on the agenda. And with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0. Item number nine, policy matters, we have no policy matters before us this evening. Item number 10, quarterly financial update, presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomschools.org/finance. And there is no formal presentation on the financial update this evening. Moves us on to item number 11, curriculum and instruction, 11.1, acceptance of Title I Part D prevention and intervention grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 support recommends the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Title I Part D grant funds in the amount of $223,366, and expenditures of funds in accordance with the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
I move approval.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0. Item 11.2, approval of adoption for physical education instruction and student materials.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the instruction and student materials from Focus Fitness and WellNet for the use in kindergarten through grade 12 physical education classrooms. Funding source, curriculum instruction, basic education funding. And Superintendent Santoro has asked Assistant Superintendent Verhar to come up and make a few comments before you make your decision.
Should we make a motion first? Is that appropriate? I move...
Sure. Second. Been moved and seconded, we'll reserve questions and comments of the board until after your comments.
Good evening, Board, it's my pleasure to bring before you a recommendation to adopt Focus Fitness and WellNet for our K-12 physical education classrooms. I'd like to thank you for your interest in this adoption. My team and I appreciated the opportunity to address the questions Director Hines and other board members posed at the last board meeting in a recent Friday report. This adoption, in accordance with your Regulation and Policy 2020, is in direct response to the needs of our students, our educators, and updated Washington State physical education standards. We're thankful for the close partnership of our educators throughout this two-year process that brings us here tonight. Our educators have partnered with us to prioritize standards, vet the existing resources, and work through the RFP process that included a full pilot. If you move forward with this adoption, two separate purchases will be escalated to you, one for the purchase of the instructional materials per the RFP process, and one for a bid on equipment. Combined, these two purchases are not to exceed the $200,000. On behalf of our superintendent, it is my honor to formally recommend Focus Fitness and WellNet for your consideration as the adopted curriculum for K-12 physical education.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Director Cobb?
I just want to say that I really appreciate hearing directly from teachers about their experience piloting the curriculum. We have a lot of learning standards, and I think that when we see the benchmark reports and the assessment of our kind of end outcomes, there's always a question about, well, is it that the students didn't master the standards, was it that the student wasn't taught the standards that were assessed? So I feel much better about closing, starting to close that gap around the fidelity of implementation of the curriculum that was aligned to the standards, that then we can make sense of the outcome, because we're more assured that the standards that we prioritize, that we know are most important to teach, were taught, the curriculum was aligned to those standards, and we assessed, and then we saw where we are. So I'm really excited about the fact that the teachers are excited about it, and you feel like that will help move your practice forward. So thank you for coming and sharing your input and your experience with the pilot.
Any other questions or comments? Director Leon?
Just to congratulate you on the forward-thinking here, the evidence has been there for a long time, the medical literature, that physical activity helps obviously prevent heart disease, diabetes, but also makes mental health better and learning better, so people open up their brains and are better learners when they're physically active, and then you're teaching them to have those skills and appreciate them and take them into adulthood, so it'll be less business for ED doctors and cardiovascular surgeons.
Only comment I have is the price is right. It's nice to have an inexpensive curriculum.
I'd also like to thank the teachers for taking time to be here, it is very helpful to have that perspective, and then my youngest is a fifth grader at Lowell, so she's actually, I've had my own in-house ground-truthing of the curriculum, and she's been experiencing it, and she says good things about it. So it's, we don't often see this sort of consensus when we're evaluating a curriculum, and so it's nice to, in a thoroughly-vetted process, to have consensus that this is the right curriculum moving forward. Are there any other additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, business matters, 12.1, approval of purchase order with TransSource Services Group for two firewalls.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of the firewalls from TransSource Services Group for the amount of $236,313. Funding source, technology levy funds.
I move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Cobb?
Can you explain to me a little bit more about what a firewall does? I mean, we're all exposed because we interact with the world of technology and computers, but can you explain just a little bit of the value?
So think of a firewall as the locked front door in your house, keeps the bad guys out. Essentially, it walls off our internal network from the outside world and blocks incoming attempts from people who would like to do our network and our users harm.
Can you explain to, for the benefit of the public too, why two?
So, we're putting them at two different sites. So, we have two different internet connections, and both of those need to be protected.
Director Leon.
Just for everyone's benefit too, it sounds like it's also been a speed issue, and it's more secure. This allows better speed communication than the old firewall.
Yes, so, one of these will replace two that we currently have at our site here, and we will take one of those and put them at an additional site, which will allow us to use a second 10-gig connection to the internet. So, essentially, our connectivity availability will go from three gigs to 20.
Any additional questions or comments?
I thought it was double, but that's more than double. That's almost seven times this one. Great.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. We'll move on to agenda item number 13, other business. 13.1, authorization for a right-of-way deed with the City of Tacoma for the Browns Point Elementary School replacement construction project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent or her designated to execute right-of-way deed number 7376 with the City of Tacoma for the redevelopment under the construction permit from Browns Point Elementary School.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. Moves us on to item number 14, report to the board. I don't believe there's a report this evening.
No.
We'll move on to item number 15, board comments and reports, and I'd like to start with our student representative.
I don't have much to say, but I was really excited to hear about the phonics teacher, or the principal of Bryant and the phonics instruction, and how she's really excited about it, and she thinks that it's going to make the students excited about reading, which is really important, and I'm interested to hear more.
Thank you. I'll start with Director Cobb on this side.
I don't have a report tonight.
Okay. Director Leon.
No report.
Director Wenskill.
So, I have a few things to say. So, first of all, we had this wonderful celebration today, and the part that I liked the best was where we had everybody come up, the 20 different people who have contributed to our district. We had one of the cooks from one of the schools. We had people from security at Truman, Truman's security guard. We had crossing guards. We had playground supervisors. We had nurse, librarian, and in the back of the room, Tom Weaver, who helps put these programs, our meetings together. He was one of the people that was called up. It was really interesting to see how many people make our districts work. So, that was really great, and our on-time graduation for more than four years is 90.5%. There was a little quiz, and that was really good, too. I like hearing those. So, that was a great celebration at Eastside Community Center, first time I've been there, and it was wonderful. I want to move on to a couple issues. So, one of them that I've heard of in the last few days has to do with signing up for sports, I think in middle school. Now, I've heard it from middle school, and I haven't heard it if it's a problem in high school, but people, I don't know, do we have a new computer system for that? Because people are having a hard time accessing it.
We do. We have a new registration process, it's an online registration process. So, if they are having troubles or difficulties, it shouldn't stop them from participating, but they can get direct support right at their school.
Okay, so, if they don't have access to computers, they can have someone at the school do it for them?
They can have access to computers at school. Some of that information is there. They also have kiosks, but they should be able to do it from any place, public library as well. And then, if they can't do that, still, we can get them paper copies of any forms necessary.
Totally. That would be good to put on our Facebook, because I think that there's been a lot of information going back and forth, frustration of people not able to do that, I've heard from several people. Then, another question I have is, have we talked anymore about the fall basketball and baseball situation where the both sports are the same time? Have we looked at that to maybe remedy that situation, since those are two very popular sports?
We have looked at the numbers. There were some sports increased, some decreased, not significantly around, and it's an ongoing conversation also with our community partners around field space, and so, no final decisions have been made.
Okay, so, I hope that we're open to that, looking at that. And then, what about the Stadium Bowl and having that open for people to run those stairs on the weekends? Have we looked into that anymore?
I don't know about an issue of the Stadium Bowl. We'll have to come back.
I can definitely provide some additional information in the Friday report to answer that question.
Okay.
According to our policy, it should be open over the weekend.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have today.
You can correct yourself, procedure, procedure, not policy.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And just anecdotally, I've been on the campus a couple of times over the weekends, and it's been open.
Oh, good. That's good to hear. So, I hadn't heard a follow-up.
Yes, so, I think, I appreciate that. I also, and thank you for following up, Director Wenskill. The concern that I've had, that it's been expressed has decreased, which to me is evidence that the problem's been addressed. But if there is additional information to provide, would you please provide it to us in the Friday report and perhaps also out to the public, so that people understand that that is an option, that if in the past you've tried to go to the Stadium Bowl and your only good option is to try to hop over the fence, that maybe you no longer try to go there, because you don't want to take the risk of hopping the fence, that we now have those gates opened, and we're inviting people to come and take advantage of that facility over the weekend? Would be great.
Can I have a comment?
You may, Director Leon.
Sorry, there was something else that I just remembered. So...
You passed previously, so you've got at least one.
Okay, thank you. So, I attended Big Brothers Big Sisters Board Meeting last night, so I've joined their, as a consultant on their board. I've been a Big Brother for a couple of years now. So, just to give a little background, they've been, I believe, in Pierce County, Tacoma, for over 60 years. There's about 300 kids on the waiting list currently. Part of their, the issues is that, so, two big things. We need more Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We need a lot of men of color more specifically than, we need some women too, but mostly men. And there is a budget deficit, so it's been, money comes from outside of Pierce County to help the Pierce County program work. So, there's going to be a big push for fundraising. We had Tacoma Public Schools representative there last night, in addition to myself, Multi-Care and some other leaders from the community, and they're looking for our help in helping lead as a institution that already has many mentors. We work with outside organizations that also do mentoring, but Big Brothers Big Sisters really is, kind of leads the way in how to mentor and keep children safe, also with other background check information that is necessary to ensure kids are safe. So, just to, there's going to be a push to separate the Seattle from the Tacoma office in the next year or so, as we become more financially viable here in Tacoma, because they've been very connected in a way that sometimes hasn't let Tacoma flourish as much. Some of the administrative costs and administrative HR and people like that are going to continue to be up in Seattle, but Tacoma's going to have more of its own Big Brothers Big Sisters presence. So, we're looking for mentors. Teachers make great mentors, but I know teachers are already pretty overworked, so we start to look outside of the teaching profession, too. That's it.
There's a new director. I met him just today at this event, the Big Brothers Big Sisters.
All right, thank you. I have two items. One, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go and see the Stadium Theater Group perform Romeo and Juliet, and they were fantastic, and what an amazing undertaking. And Director Leon's daughter was the stage manager, so it was pretty fun to see her in that role. And I think it's one of the cool things about the theater program, is they brought out kids that were stagehands, they brought out kids that were actors, they had kids that were in the orchestra, they had set designers, and so, the wonderful way that the arts allows kids to get involved in a number of different ways was pretty cool to see. And I just piggyback on Director Wenskill's comments about the graduation ceremony today, that celebration. And 89.3%, I had a conversation after the formal program is over with someone that said, we're just talking about, we keep bringing up the 2007 report on where we were when we were announced as a dropout factory, and I do think that we're to the point now, we're almost a decade since we have collectively, as a community, decided that we were going to be focused on graduation rates. I think we've changed or recalibrated the expectation, and I think that it's always important to know from where you've come, but I do believe that we're in a place now where the expectation in Tacoma Public Schools is you start as a kindergartner or pre-K, and you're going to graduate. What are you going to do in year 13? And all of these different pathways that have now been created for kids to start thinking about early in their education careers, to keep them engaged, all of the tremendous student partnerships with students in the community, people that are wrapping their arms around them, literally and figuratively, to let them know people care about you, you're going to be here free academically, you're going to help you with your social-emotional needs, that there's a variety of ways in which we've gotten to that 89.3%. And early on, I know that there was some questions about how we had gotten so focused so quickly to achieve such amazing gains, and there's not a lot of questioning of that anymore, because as was exhibited today, it's truly a community effort. There is, there's not any one single thing you can point to. Do we have the best superintendent in the United States of America? Yes. Do we have the best deputy superintendent in the United States of America? Yes. Do we have incredible world-class teachers and administrators? Yes. As a community, are we focused and unified on what we're trying to achieve? Yes. Do students feel appreciated and empowered? Yes. That's why we're at 89.3%. And I think that for us now, as we continue on, the hard part is going to be to continue to keep the level, you know, we've gotten accustomed to, oh, we nudge up a couple of points every year, but how do you maintain excellence? And I am not a fan of the New England Patriots, but I do appreciate that they have been good for a long time, and I think that's now the next challenge for the district, is to say, how do we continue to be good for a long time? And there are areas of improvement, but what we're pretty good at in this district is laying the floor and building upon that solid foundation. And we came out and acknowledged that graduation rates were unacceptable. When they were at 50%, 55%, that is unacceptable, and we put a plan in action, and now you see the students and the families that are reaping the benefit. If you drop out of high school, not a lot of legitimate employment options in this 21st century economy, and I think what we've done is created futures. We've changed the trajectory for lives for kids and families, and that's something that, to me, is what motivates me every day to come and do the work, and why I'm so proud to sit up here with you all, and to Director Wenskill's point, we bring different perspectives. We're all up here for the same thing. We want great things for kids and families. We have different ideas of how to get there, and that's been the power of why we've been able to achieve so much in such a short period of time. So, just thank you all for your work that you continue to do on top of all of the other things that you have going on in your lives. Thanks to the superintendent, the deputy superintendent. Unbelievable hours. You recognized us and talked about the time that we put in. I don't think people, you know, I look at the Friday report and our conversations and other bits of information of how you're involved in the community, and you're a person that's figured out how to get 27 hours in a day. That's why we're able to achieve what we're able to achieve. You hire really good people.
You're good people.
And we have amazing teachers that connect with kids and really inspire them to learn. And on that note, we'll move on to item number 16, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, January 17. I recently learned today's the 10th, so a week from today would be the 17th. We're going to be back for a study session to talk about the budget. And then, on Thursday, January 24, we'll be back for our next regular business meeting. Item number 17, executive session. Looking at general counsel, I don't believe we have one this evening. That brings us to item number 18, adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.